Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the September ninth, two thousand twenty five Board of Education meeting. We are calling the meter, the meeting to order at seven oh four P M. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. A reading of meeting notice. This meeting is being conducted in compliance with the open meeting session that the Verona Board of Education passed a resolution at its annual reorganization meeting held on January seventh, two thousand twenty five. The meeting set forth the schedule of its regular meetings, which resolution was within seven days of passage. The schedule was sent to the Star Ledger, the Township of Verona and the V E A. Postings of the meeting setting forth the time, location and agenda were posted at the, at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public School District website. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been avail- available to the public and press. Mister Cruz, could you please call attendance?
Walker.
Assistant.
Mrs. Farrar.
Here.
Mrs. Prisco. For the record, Mrs. Prisco is absent. Mister Boone.
Here.
We have quorum. Thank you.
I need a motion to pass routine matters.
I'll forward, I'll first it if you want to get second, I'll second.
Oh, is there any discussion? Okay.
Seeing none.
Seeing none.
Mister Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar.
Yes.
Mister Boone.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Good evening. Well, we opened schools to a great start with the exception of the erroneous attendance marking all of our students attended, out absent, uh, which was uh, ju- it was really an unfortunate glitch. Uh, I know there were a lot of parents that were very concerned and upset about that, and I did send an apology uh, email. Um, we are using a new um, alert system and uh, there was a radio button clicked between the two that led to chaos. I happened to be at Lanning Avenue School when it happened and chaos was um, an understatement. So, we apologize for that again, and Mister Bellage is working with both um, Genesis and with Aptige to make sure nothing like that happens again. Uh, the Verona nine eleven memorial is being conducted eight forty-five uh, on nine eleven at the town hall. As usual, our um, our H B W students will be in attendance and our high school choir will perform. Back to school nights, uh, we're starting with F N Brown on uh, that day on nine eleven, Forest Avenue at nine, on nine sixteen, Lanning on nine seventeen, H B W, not uh, on the eighteenth, Brookdale on the twenty-fifth and the high school on the twenty-sixth. You can check their calendars for start and end times. Each school does have a different starting and ending time. Uh, the V Mac Family Night has been moved from October ninth to October eighth um, due to uh, conflicts with some of our, our tournament schedules that we don't schedule ourselves, that were scheduled for us by N J S I A A. Um, we are working on, uh, well, actually, we put our building goal, our building academicals on hold for right now, simply because we're still waiting for the Department of Education uh, to provide guidance as to whether or not we will have N J S L A data from the spring administration of the new adaptive N J S L A. It's um, it's my belief that we will not and it's likely um, would be problematic and present challenges to compare the scores from the non-adaptive test to the adaptive test so that um, this spring twenty twenty-six administration data may become the new baseline. We'll wait to hear more on that. I did email the Department of Education and I was told, don't make any decisions yet, uh, wait for the next broadcast, so hopefully Tuesday, next week, we'll get, get information from them. A reminder that our schools will be closed Tuesday, the twenty-third for observances, for the observance of Rosanna. Uh, we are in the process of a business administrator search. We conducted round one interviews today and three finalists will move on to a second round of interviews. Uh, they are scheduled for Monday uh, September fifteenth. All of our candidates are currently under contract, so the best case scenario, uh, we're looking at a December start for the new B A. Uh, we have secured an interim who is Steve Robinson of School Accounting Services. He'll be in our district three days a week. Uh, Mister Robinson recently retired from Livingston Public Schools, where he was the school business administrator and board secretary for twenty-three years.
Diane, up here real quick.
Yeah.
Um, I know that the board approved a uh, a search agency that helped, which I, which I fully supported to find this. Uh, what was your experience working with the agency and was Ethan, it was a boon that we did that?
I think it was, I think it's great. I mean, they're still working with us. They sat in on the interviews today. Um, not only did they screen all of the candidates, um, they had uh, some information that I, I didn't have about potentially not, not to waste your time on. Um, and they uh, he, he and, and his partner Dana Sullivan, who is uh, was the B A in Milburn and Westfield for her career, who is now the interim in Montclair dealing with that mess. Um, really did a tremendous amount of research on the candidates and provided us with good intel with regard to making a selection for round one. They provided us all of the questions and sat in um, for our committee, which was quite large, but the majority of our committee don't have a lot of finance background, and so they, they helped clarify the answers to some of the questions and, and help our committee members um, see the strengths and, and weaknesses of some of the candidates. It was very helpful.
I know maybe ten percent of what it's like to be a B A, right? But just like the whole, I like what you said about the idea that like they're gonna know the minutia that like, layman like us won't, won't know. Um, I don't need the exact, or approximately, how many applications did we get for that job?
Uh, interestingly enough, we got many applications, but very um, most were not qualified. Yeah, so we got nineteen applications in total.
Okay.
Um, weeding out those that are on administrative leave or have had tenure charges filed against him.
Yeah.
And uh, and bringing in, you know, and also saying that this is a hard budget and we continually give Mister Cruz a lot of credit for the work he's done here. Um, having someone with no business administrator or assistant business administrator experience was not.
I couldn't agree more. I think that like, we're in a position where we're really stable, like our strength right now is, is one of our strengths is our, is our, is our B A spot for sure. And anyone could be the board secretary, but the, the B A part of the job is eight potatoes. Um, and I, I, I think it's very wise that our district looks to invest in a, a high quality candidate. There's high quality candidates we can get, cause it's, it's a shallow pool right now, as, as you know.
Very shallow pool, and there's a lot of job openings, so that's why I said base, best case scenario. So we, we really moved three, what we think's very solid candidates forward, um, but we're going to be uh, you know, competing.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna, I, I, I speak myself at the board. Um, it's, it's a position too vital to, to lowball. So I, I'd like us to be aggressive to get some of that for at least the next five years. We can count on the way we counted on Jorge.
Uh, I was really impressed with the people that we interviewed, that we're putting forward, so um, kudos to them, and I think any of those three would be a decent choice, a good choice. Now we just have to get them to say yeah.
Is, is it, um, if, if you and the committee have um, three in mind, what what would be um, distinguishing factors for the ultimate candidate?
Uh, well, it's experience. I mean, um, and two are sitting uh, school business administrator, board secretaries. One of them is an uh, assistant business administrator, but with a, a great variety across the finance office in school business. Um, it would be uh, somebody who has the whole package in terms of their knowledge of accounting and school business accounting, because school business accounting is different than general accounting. Um, and the ability to work, to understand that our, everything we do about our budget and our um, and our school business office is about kids and, and making sure that we have what we need to support our students and uh, and community and um, and staff. And uh, that has that ability to work with others because we've all worked with business administrators that don't have that, and we were lucky that Mister Cruz does have that. Um, but when, it's very difficult when you work with a business administrator that doesn't have that ability to work collaboratively in the best interest of kids, because in my, in my experience, which, which is why, by the way, I reached out to Mister Robinson. I worked with him for eighteen years. Um, and he has that quality as well. Um, if you don't have that, it just makes it so much more difficult to get the work done in the business office. So that would be my uh, mostly experience with the ability to work collaboratively.
We expect to see a candidate for on an agenda.
Well, um, I will, we're going to interview the last three. We'll, we'll decide who we're gonna make an offer to. I will make an offer if I can either Monday night or Tuesday. Then that has to go to, uh, we have to generate a contract. Contract has to go to the county business, uh, sorry, executive county superintendent for approval. Once we get that um, contract approved by them, we can place it in front of a candidate. They can sign it, then it goes on the board agenda.
The county, um, what, what does the count, what, I, I'm sorry, for my education, I'm asking this, is what is the county looking at in terms of their approval uh, standards?
Oh, there's a, there's like a, a one pager that shows uh, salary, benefits, um, other um, associated like cellphone, um, the things that we're providing, like perks that we're providing, and make sure that they fall within the law. For a superintendent's contract, they're making.
Administrator, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's just gonna say, similar to what they do when they look at superintendent contracts. The difference is they're still looking at salary, like if the superintendent's salary is too high for what the department of that thinks is superintendent's salary, they'll come back with it. That's too high.
Yes, they're looking to see like, you know, you have X amount of students, here's your administrative costs versus the other school next to you at school, the other side of you that has X amount of students, has X amount of administrative costs. Um, as long as you're within that, that, that Goldilocks zone, then they're gonna say yes. And I, I think in Verona, they, they will be because uh, you know, we've, we've cut down a lot of, especially with Stipend, a lot of administrative costs.
We have.
Um, so we should be good to, to look to offer a competitive salary, but we want Jorge to change his mind.
Yeah. What's the deadline for that, Mister Walker?
That's the deadline. The deadline would be before Monday. Um, okay, so uh, just an update on the Trees for Schools grant, and it's not a positive update. Uh, we may be declined, we may need to decline that grant. Um, I spoke to the grant administrator uh, two weeks ago, and she urged me to come to the mandatory professional development session or workshop session on um, nine, September nineteenth to have more information. There are two um, major issues that may lead to us not accepting the grant. We can always apply for it again. Um, the first issue is that in between the first application process last year and the second application process, uh, they changed the way they're reimbursing. So on the initial grant that we filled out, the reimbursement was spelled out very clearly as uh, seventy percent of the grant that you're awarded, you get upfront. And you use that money to purchase trees, which are very expensive, and, and dig holes and do all the care that you need for those trees. Excuse me, and that thirty percent of the grant would come from district funds for reimbursement in the following subsequent school year. Um, when we saw the grant come out again, and I spoke to the, the grant administrator about what we didn't do well on in order to make our chances greater to receive this grant. We spent a lot of time talking about how to fix the grant in that they changed the way uh, the reimbursement was happening, and now we need to um, find eighty percent of the funds from your district budget that you won't get reimbursed until September, end of September, two thousand twenty-six. So um, that would mean that this but, this district would need to find forty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars in order to buy the trees and, and take care of them. I understand their point, what was happening was um, people were, uh, districts were uh, purchasing large numbers of trees and planting them and not doing the care that it takes for them to survive. So now they're not giving you the money until you can prove that you are not just planting the trees, but you're caring for them so they can survive. But they weren't clear and they weren't upfront with this change, and many school districts have dropped out as a result of not being able to um, to do that. And the second piece is there's a tremendous amount of paperwork that I was relying on Mister Cruz to do.
Like, I, when I, you know, speak for myself, when I ran for a board member, right? Uh, of course, you want the environment to be better, but like, the number of trees in Verona Public School property was, was not a campaign issue.
Right.
Yeah, I feel like we have enough, right? Um, if, if this is something where it's, it's, it's not you know, the, the best time interest or the best, any interest at Verona, you know, I, I could live without it, and if we wanna reserve money over time and capital reserves to, to make some kind of tree project, I, I could live with that, but I, I also know that tree root, I've seen personally how much tree roots can, can ruin, you know, things that you built, right? Um, so I, I'm not anti-environment, but it, it, if it's prohibited to the district to spend forty thousand upfront on something that we may or may not even get reimbursed for, my, I think my vote would be no.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm, you know, I had, when I called the grant administrator, I spoke with Carol Thomas, who is the um, Shade Tree Commission, on the Shade Tree Commission, uh, co-chair uh, for the township. I mean, this was really, uh, we were approached by the township and Sustainable New Jersey to join with them to do this grant. They are being, not the Shade Tree Commission, Sustainable New Jersey.
Well.
Just wanna make that clear.
To, to that point on the um, Verona's Shade Tree Commission with, uh, working with the town, is there any I don't know a better way to describe it, other than say, is there any arm twisting that they can do on our behalf for the grant people to make this problem go away?
No, they were adamant. Um, and, and I'll learn more on the nineteenth. I will go to that uh, workshop and I'll, I'll get as much information as I can, but the, the, actually bigger piece, because I talked to Mister Cruz about whether or not we could procure that forty thousand dollars or so, is a way we can do it. Um, but it, it's kind of like paying the immune bar and Peter to pay Paul. Uh, the bigger piece is that there's a tremendous amount of paperwork that is required to be done by the business administrator, and we will not have a business administrator on staff more than three days a week through potentially December, mid-December, uh, depending on uh, our search process, which um, will not being able to start this grant until December, it, it's a grant that's not gonna, not gonna be successful.
I get, I get texts and emails and calls about Verona Public School stuff all the time, as sure Mike does and Diane does. No one's ever called me the, the trees. Um, so like, if, if, if this isn't a, a real positive no-brainer win for us, then, then I would recommend we just focus on our teaching plan, which, which is, you know.
Appreciate that.
Trees.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I, I think I agree with Mister Walker in that I would love to have as many trees as we can, um, but, I mean, this process needs to be user-friendly. If we want, if they want us to help them by helping the environment, it's gotta be, it's gotta be an easy process. We just don't have the resources.
Okay, and uh, two more things on my report. Mallory's Army uh, assemblies and uh, evening event, a community event uh, is finally coming, uh, thanks to Verona Together, who raised funds with their cornhole tournament last year and made a sizable charitable contribution to Mallory's Army Foundation.
Tell them that you won the first round match you played in.
I did, I won the first round match. I didn't win the second round. But I had, I had Laura Palmerisi with me as a partner, and yeah, she was good. Yeah, we did. Um, I thought we were gonna keep going, but gotta practice more. Um, uh, so Diane Grossman, who is Mallory's mom and founder of Mallory's Army Foundation, will be presenting at, uh, to our sixth to twelfth grade students during the day on October sixth and seventh and the parents and community on October seventh at six P M. Location to be determined. I think it's most likely gonna be at the high school auditorium. Um, Mallory's Army Foundation's mission is to empower kids to be the kind of person they, uh, they want to meet to educate parents on how their kids interface with the world, both online and in school, to enrich schools by sharing Mallory's story and promoting kindness among students, to enhance communities by uniting everyone in an effort to blue out bullying. Uh, the Mallory's Army Foundation describes Mallory as an all-American tween girl who is an avid gymnast, cheerleader and lover of all things outdoors. Her devotion to competitive cheer and gymnastics taught her determination and humility. She loved spending summers, summer weekends at her favorite campgrounds with her family, and she admired the simple pleasures of nature. Her love for her friends, family, and even though she didn't know was immeasurable, she had a passion for the arts and crafts and found, and when she found out that children with cancer couldn't go to camp for free, she used that uh, passion for arts and crafts and entrepreneurial, and her entrepreneurial wheels began to turn. She made and sold bracelets in an effort to raise money for her favorite charity, Camp Good Days. Mallory called her life a bracelet kind of life. It is understood and understood that something as simple as a bracelet on her arm could act as a reminder to be good in the world. With um, so much life ahead of her, um, sadly, on June fourteenth, twenty seventeen, Mallory died by suicide, and it's been her family's mission to empower kids to be amazing people, educate parents, provide enrichment program for schools and enhance communities to bring people together. And so um, I know when I, my first year in Verona, parents reached out to find, to ask me if we could bring Mallory's Army Foundation and Diane Grossman here. And um, she hadn't, she wasn't doing her presentations. Uh, she took a small hiatus from that, and when um, uh, Mister Luck, Luck Glass, Luck Glass at Verona Together reached out to me and said that he had this partnership with her, um, it was a way to bring uh, Diane Grossman to the district. So that is, will be on October sixth and seventh for our students, and October seventh in the evening for our parents. More information will go out with a flyer. And uh, lastly, uh, we are, I'm presenting tonight quickly on our student safety data system for reporting period two and the end of the year for the twenty fourteen, twenty twenty-four, twenty fourteen, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Do I control it with this, or are you gonna control it for me? Okay. Okay. So reporting period two is uh, January one, two thousand twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five? I can't see that song, I have to look on my. So I, I have the twenty-three, twenty-four data uh, up here for Janet, for reporting period two, as well as a twenty-four, twenty-five. At the high school, we had um, a decrease uh, by two alleged uh, H I B investigations and a decrease um, with two of two confirmed H I B and a decrease of three, um, what we call preliminary determinations are not initiated. And what that is, just as a reminder, is when someone uh, makes a complaint that H I B may have been perpetrated, um, if the, if the, the, in our policy and in the law, it allows for uh, our principals to make a, a preliminary determination. And what that looks like is if all of the facts that are presented in the H I B complaint are one hundred percent accurate and it still doesn't meet the definition of H I B, they are not required to investigate it as H I B. Um, so that went from last year five uh, to this year two, uh, not initiated. I mean, these could have been code of conduct violations, but they were not in, uh, investigated as uh, an A, a potential H I B. Um, we saw in reporting period two, zero physical altercations at the high school. Other incidents leading to removal of a student, these primarily are insubordination, um, cutting, things like that, nothing significant or they'd be in another category. One act of vandalism this year, um, a decrease from four to three um, incidents of substance use and, look, thank God, no weapons. At uh, White Horn, we um, saw six investigations for H I B, but only one of them was confirmed compared to three last year and only one uh, H I B uh, preliminary determination, which was not initiated. Zero fights, uh, which is down from five from last year. One other incident leading to removal, and again, very similar to the high school, this is generally insubordination, uh, sometimes um, uh, foul language at the middle school, it can be that, and no acts of vandalism, no acts of substance abuse and no weapons. For the elementary schools, we had one uh, incident uh, that was uh, alleged to be H I B, but was not initiated. Uh, Mrs. Studo's preliminary determination felt that if, even if it met, even if it was a hundred percent true and accurate, it would not have met the definition, the legal definition for H I B. And no incidents at F N Brown, no incidents at Forest Avenue in reporting period two. And at Lanning, uh, we did have restraint, um, the new category of restraint and seclusion when a student elopes um, or is uh, an acting in a way that they could harm themselves or others. We have trained professionals in all of our elementary schools uh, on how to restrain a student safely. And so we had one student that needed to be restrained this year. The end of the year data, again, we're looking at twenty-three and twenty-four. Um, so this includes the reporting period one that we reported on earlier in the year. Uh, end of the year data, uh, we had at the high school, six H I B alleged, so they were investigated as H I B, but not found to be H I B. Three confirmed H I Bs, one uh, preliminary determination, one fight, six other incidents, and this is total, so this is the same six that were in the reporting period two uh, as well as the vandalism and substance abuse. Same with uh, H B White Horn. Uh, six alleged H I B, one confirmed, one preliminary determination, no fights. Uh, that same incident leading to removal, no vandalism and no substance. Uh, for the end of the year data for the elementaries, it is the same as reporting period two. And that's the S S D S uh, required report for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. And that's the end of my superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I, I have two from, from the uh, school safety uh, report. One, on any incident involving fighting, uh, once we determine the, the end results of it, do we log or track what was the initial cause of the fight um, beyond?
Yeah, of that information, there's always a summary in the student information system in, in Genesis, uh, under, there's a category of incidents. And um, in that, there's um, usually a summary of, of what happened between the students and the consequences. Let me s- brief.
Yeah, I, I, the reason I ask for that is, is if, if, and it, it's not a festering problem here, but if we see several fights, are we looking for any trend lines on what's sparking that?
No, I have to say, we have really good kids here.
Yeah.
I mean, looking at this data, it's like, they actually believe and present it.
Yeah.
Most of what it, most of what's on here are kids like cutting lunch detention. That your biggest problem.
Yeah, well, good problems to have.
Yeah, good problems to have, right?
Um, and then this is probably getting ahead of the cart a little bit, but looking into this coming school year, are we investigating, or how are we investigating the uh, the tack issue at uh, Brookdale?
Uh, we are not, uh.
I saw the police is, but.
It wasn't, it's not on our, it wasn't even on our.
I, I thought it was on the Brookdale, but it was not.
It's not.
Okay, I misunderstood.
On the property of the apartment complex um, that owns that property, that's the, that's the path, uh, path that goes between the apartments and Brookdale.
Yeah.
Yeah, so no, it was not on our property, and um, I know it's an active um, investigation. Um, but it was very dangerous, and I hope they find out who did it. I know they found a bucket of, of tax, I mean, this was public knowledge um, near the apartments, so uh, somebody over there was, had excess tax more to put out there. Just what a dangerous, ridiculously dumb thing to do. Upsetting, it is upsetting.
Good.
Brian's a Brookdale kid though, right? Don't you have a little house right up front? Yes.
Yeah, okay, I thought, for some reason, when I saw the initial reports, I thought it was back behind the uh, softball fields.
So much, thank you. Uh, Mister Cruz, your board secretary report?
Yes. Last.
Last, yes. I won't be here at the, at the last, at the last meeting of the month since it's on, yeah, those last two days I'll, I'll be taking my last vacation days. So good evening, everyone. In finance, I'm pleased to report that we have the, the July Board Secretary Treasury Report and transfer report, they're all in agreement. At the board, at the next board meeting, we will have the August report. That will be my last financial report that I'll be submitting to the board for approval. I won't be able to work on the September report because we normally wait until the bank statements to the reconciliation. So interim. Mr. Robinson will, will be actually taking care of September going forward. During that interim period. Over the, the next two weeks also, we will continue to collaborate with our auditors. They will be in the district on the third week of September. And verifying and reviewing our fiscal year 24, 25. And we'll be completing that. And we're hoping that the auditors will have a final report to present to the board in the month of November. The third week of September. So they'll be here September, the week of September 22nd. I also want to share a message to families. We encourage families, we've been receiving lunch, free lunch applications from families that qualify for free lunch. I just want to continue encouraging families that do qualify to continue submitting those applications, whether it's at their schools or directly to the board office. We will have our staff available to answer any questions and any concerns, they could contact the board office and we could help them with that. As always, even though we have a deadline to receive the applications by the end of September. We will honor any hardship cases throughout the school year. So if there's a family in need and, and for whatever the reason is, we will honor those lunch applications throughout the year as just want to continue to message out again, the Verona Board of Ed is not, does not participate in the national school lunch program. What that means is that we do not get federal dollars for free reduced lunch. So what the board does is that the board subsidizes and covers the cost of any student's meals if they do qualify and meet the income thresholds as outlined in the free lunch application form. And in addition to that, I just want to also remind folks, if also if a family it falls into the bracket of reduce, we do honor that as well as a free lunch. Lastly, to conclude my report tonight. This is my last board meeting. I, I want to take a moment to sincerely thank the board for their partnership, the collaboration. And, and the Verona community for the last four, four years here. In my 17 year career in school finance, I definitely will cherish these last four years in Verona. I, it's definitely been moments of memories of, of, I know that even my first year in, in Verona, it was a year of a lot of challenges and grit. Being able to hear things of, and, and, and even the challenges that, that we continue facing that four years ago and, and to look back at the impact that we have made. I could always see that we've made a huge impact on teaching and learning. And I thank all of you and the collaboration that we do every day. And, and the work that you guys actually do in supporting this amazing community. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Yep. And we've asked Ryan to keep your car keys, so.
I just also want to point out, families that qualify for free and reduced lunch are also exempt from the Chromebook insurance. You so much, Jorge. You know, we wish you all the best and we, we thank you so much for all of your work. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, student reports, fine.
Good evening. All right. So at VHS, the 2025, 2026 school year is already off to a strong start. As the senior class kicked off the year with the annual traditions of senior car painting at the parking lot and senior sunrise at Eagle Rock Reservation. In terms of athletics and activities, today was notably the Fall Captain's SEC Leadership Summit, where student athlete leaders gathered to build leadership skills and represent their individual programs. And today there was also a girls soccer match against Bloomfield, while the cross country team ran a meet at Branch Brook Park. And speaking of girls soccer, this week is part of a close succession of games for the team with an away game against Glen Ridge this Thursday and a Saturday home game versus Pope John Regional School at 2:00 PM. And on the other hand, the boys soccer team had started their season with a resounding victory against Shabazz High School and will be having a game at Caldwell at 4:00 PM tomorrow, Wednesday. And the girls tennis team is facing Melbourne tomorrow, Wednesday and West Essex on Friday. The girls field hockey team scored a victory against Scotch Plains, a fan win yesterday with a match against Moncler at Centennial Field this Friday. The football season started off with a win against St. Mary's at West Orange on the 28th of August. And this Friday, the 12th of September, I believe, is the home rivalry, rivalry game against Cedar Grove. And in the same vein, football senior Dean Algeri has been nominated for USA Football's Heart of a Giant Award, which honors high school football students who inspire greatness. And you can vote for Algeri on their website online. And beyond sports, over the course of the summer, the marching band concluded a rigorous camp at VHS anticipation of future competitions and football teams. And our cheerleading team also had a productive summer participating in the UCA Pine Forest Camp to get ready for the season as well. And both of these wonderful programs will be performing at halftime for the first home game of the school year. So there's even more incentive to show up Friday. And the VHS marching band is also looking for individuals to make contributions to the program, which encompasses over 70 members this fall season. So anyone who is interested in donating to the fundraiser would also be greatly appreciated. And in other news, picture day for underclassmen will be taking place this Thursday, September 11th. The club fair will be held at one Shawn Wednesdays, September 17th. And all students are definitely encouraged to participate and find an extracurricular to get involved in and just like integrate themselves within the community. And student council elections will be taking place next Friday, September 19th. And unfortunately, I do not have any, I do not have any political opposition. So it seems like you are all stuck with me until graduation. And then VHS administration, VHS administered the standardized math growth testing for freshmen and sophomores today. And we'll continue to administer them tomorrow morning. With also next week, I believe, college visits will resume on the 15th with signups on Aviance. And that is all for today. Thank you.
Ryan, as someone, I speak for Pam as well, that has ran unopposed, it's really nice. When you know the outcome, it makes it a whole lot less stressful. And I also voted for my buddy Dino Algeri's, hopefully the heart of a giant award.
Is that, so that's still open to, to vote for Dean?
Yeah, I believe.
I was just gonna say, do we have that link posted on the district webpage? Okay. Okay. So we'll go ahead and make sure that that's posted. That's excellent. Thank you so much, Ryan. Does anybody have any questions?
Great job, Ryan.
All right, we're going to move on to committee reports of athletics.
Have an athletics meeting and I assumed Pam would be here, even though I knew she wasn't. So everything's going great. I know we, what did we talk about? We talked about, we talked about sports. Let me see if anything is noteworthy. Oh, the, the girls volleyball team's like one of the best in the state. And that's exciting. I know that my, even my son said like, that's like the talk of the school is going to the girls volleyball games because like they're elite, elite. So that's fun. We talked about, what else do we talk? You gotta help me out. I was not prepared for this. Well, that's my report. That is, that's enough. That's it. Oh, we're having a female wrestling team. We're looking to get a coach for that because there's enough female participants that because my recollection, Diana, you probably knows better, but it was something where there is a thing where, you know, now we're at a point where they, the, the boys wrestle on, on a Saturday and the females wrestle on Sunday or maybe vice versa, or something like that, for the most part. Now we have enough people where warrants, you know, having a, someone to coach the females on the day that they have reserved for wrestling. And I think it's lovely that female wrestling is, is growing. I really do.
Yeah. And we did talk a little bit about the turf and potential upcoming replacement. We talked about the rising cost of transportation, got a new scoring scorer's table. And we are, we need to hire a JV softball coach and JV girls wrestling, or not JV, sorry, girls wrestling goes because of the number of students. You're welcome.
I, I actually do, and I hate to be that guy, I do have one question and it is a question that I've asked in the past and I do know the answer, but I feel like I gotta ask again. We're 100% on board with any astroturf, I know it's not astroturf, maintenance as opposed to considering a natural grass option for these.
My experience, and I can only speak to my most recent experience in Kinalan, where we did not have turf. And it was a really horrible experience. The fields, because they get overused, same situation here as in, in Kinalan. Because Rec uses our fields, we use their fields, fields get really beat up. Playing lacrosse on a field that's full of rock, really is what it is. When you go to scoop a ball and you throw, very often you're throwing a big chunk of rocks as well. Between the, the maintenance of a grass field that's overused and the amount of goose fecal matter. It's really, our, our athletes played in goose poop.
It's at a point where if we continue, if we go back to grass fields, number one, I'm, I'm not sure we can, because I could be wrong again, I could be wrong. But I believe that the town might have voted for an RFP just for astroturf field. So we may have already, you know, said this is what we, we want. But even if that's, if that's not the case, the district will absolutely not be able to share its fields with the local recreation and youth sports programs. If we have a grass field that gets rained out, like we just won't be able to, to schedule all the things we're currently scheduling up. And I get that there is some trepidation about, you know, what, what the, you know, the potential. I, I don't know, the studies are even mature enough to extrapolate that conclusion, but the idea of like, do they cause cancer, they do this and that. I haven't seen any firm data that shows that, but I, I do know that we can offer so much more to our community. If we don't have to reschedule our high school games because the turf field prohibits us from having to do that.
And, and spring sports that are on, that are on a field like lacrosse, really suffer because they're forced to practice, I mean, get a, get a wet spring or late snow, they're forced to practice on a blacktop. It's
This, this district cassettes die that a long time ago. We, we want turf fields. And, and I think we've benefited tremendously because of that investment and, and I, and I get that these concerns should be explored.
There's often materials.
But like, like there's so much benefit to like having these fields that drain instantly. And then you could play the second after a rainstorm ends. And I, I think the going backwards and it stinks getting tackled on a cold frozen football grass field like that, that feeling stinks. And it's a lot nicer getting tackled on a cushion. And, and that's what we have now. So I, 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 I like where we're at, in my, my, my opinion.
There are other materials, fill materials that are not like coconut fiber. There's other materials that you can fill instead of the rubber.
Yeah, all, all that I'm, and again, I'm just raising the question. And the question that I was going after more was just looking for, when we have to start replacing it, the cost effectiveness was really the angle that I'm looking at as opposed to any of the other concerns.
I will tell you though, as a former grass field manager, they are very expensive to manage because you wind up having to sob them every other year. Because they, they, they don't, they're not sustainable. So.
Killed in goose poop is, is, is not for anyone at the stadium. You were too fast to be tackled, Mr. Walker. Thank you for indulging that discussion.
Move on to comment on agenda action. If there's anyone in the public to come up, these are comments. Only items that are listed on the agenda to be voted on this evening can be discussed at this time. Anyone from the public? Okay, seeing none. We are going to move on to discussion items, new business and old business. Does anybody have anything? Okay, any correspondence?
There's no correspondence.
Okay.
Are you gonna hook us up with dinners at the conference or you're gonna hook the Fairlawn people up? What's the story? But Jorge's the guy that makes RSVPs, the vendors come to him, they don't go to Diane, I know that. You gonna hook us up or are we, are we on our own? That's on, that's on YouTube.
All right, we are now moving on. I need a motion to move action items A per personnel.
So moved.
Okay, so we're moving A1 to A5. Any discussion? Nope. Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Walker.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to move education B1 through B3. Any discussion items?
So moved. I'll second.
Hi, Mr. Cruz. I said, any discussion? Any discussion? Thanks. Discussion items? Mr. Cruz?
Yes. Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar? Motion carries.
Need a motion to move C1 to C3 athletics. I'll second. Any discussion?
Just one question on, on C1, what exactly is the relationship with GAG?
JAG are, they provide athletic trainers for when we have multiple athletic events that require a trainer to be present. And when Mr. Hallo can't be in more than one place, or if he's away or sick.
A side note, thank goodness, like as a person, I had a really severe knee injury in a football game freshman year. It wasn't a varsity game, right? But it was, you know, so like you didn't, Jay wasn't right there, he was in charge of the big, main game. Having that extra support was, was a nice piece of.
I don't know. Thank you.
Mr. Cruz?
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There's nothing for facilities. So moving on to finance, I need a motion to E1 through E7.
I'll second.
Any discussion items? Seeing none, Mr. Cruz?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to governance and policy. There's nothing there. So we're now on to public comments. Couple comments, you have three minutes. Seeing anyone in the audience? Nobody? Okay. Moving on. To adjourn. Aye. Aye. You have to make a motion, right?
I have motion to say aye.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, our next meeting is being held on Tuesday, September?
30th.
30th, 7:00 PM. And learning, learning comments.
With potentially a confidential section, session at 6:00 PM. It is 7:52.
Thank you.